Yes, sir.
Call this meeting to order, please silence your electronic devices so we can get back to our business. Stand for the name of the speaker, give me my council member's petition.
Please join me in reciting the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us now into temptation, but deliver us from evil. And now the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, and to two great nations, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments? All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker, please, use the podium. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. The council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On the first ballot, that means you have 30 seconds left. Please finish your statement because on the second ballot, I'm going to have to stop.
Joe Coburn.
Hi, my name is Joe Coburn. I'm a resident of Batavia lifelong. Brief stint in Rochester, but have been here for most of my 55 years. I live on Hutchins Street in Batavia. I am the box office and fundraising person for the Bain Street 56 Theater and Batavia Players. And I'm here today just to speak on what the theater has meant to my family and has meant to the community and how many people in Batavia are still just finding out about us. We had Christmas in the city this prior weekend, and of the dozens of people that came in, most of them had no idea that we even existed. And we get that a lot. Even though we advertise, we are in all the local papers and on the radio, people are still finding out about the wonderful work that we've done to improve downtown Batavia. I have several letters here that I'd like to give you at some point for you to read. Some of them you may have already received in your emails. But personally, my family has been involved in theater in Batavia for almost 17 years. My daughter is now a theater major at Cortland. And all of my family, my five children, have participated in some way, shape, or form in the theater, and it has enriched our lives. I have several members here tonight also in support of the theater. I know Norm, one of our longest standing members, is here to also speak. But I would just really encourage you to think about what the plan that you guys have on your website, which I read, 154-page plan, which specifically mentions that how downtown Batavia, one, needs a positive cultural aspect on Main Street. It needs a performance venue that's open in the evening. It needs the culture and the community back to a Main Street that was previously, you know, thriving and is now kind of struggling. And I believe that Main Street 56 Theater does that for you. We are looking to partner with several downtown businesses to do different events. We partner with other businesses in the county and in the community. We pull from over eight counties. I have letters here from people out of state, out of the country, from Canada that have come. And everybody says the same thing. It is a hidden gem. It is an amazing thing that Batavia has. And Batavia Players has been here since 1932, in some way, shape, or form, enriching the lives and the culture of the Batavia community. So I would encourage you to think about supporting us in every way you can. Thank you.
Good evening, folks. I have to remind you, eight years from now, in 2032, Batavia Players will be celebrating their 100th year. Batavia Players started in 1932 during the part of the Depression that they thought that the people of Batavia needed some cultural events. It went through a lot of problems. During World War II, from what I read, is there was a lack of men, and so some women and older men had to take part in some of the plays that they were putting on. Some of you may remember that the Batavia Players once had a theater that was up at Horseshoe Lake, and it was a very successful theater until it burned down. Now we are going through another problem. Now, Batavia Players is a very, very active group. I work with a lot of theater groups in the area, and it's the only one that I know that does 12 productions a year. That means every month, we are doing a play. Our plays are very successful. People enjoy coming to our plays. We are adding a plus to the cultural side of Batavia. And we're hoping that the board will be understanding that we, as Batavia Players, can only raise so much money. There's only so many tickets that we can sell, and there's only so much money that we can charge. And when we look at all the expenses that we have, it's very difficult for us to make all of those expenses. So I hope you would keep those things in mind. And also know that Batavia is very, very lucky to have a group like the Batavia Players. Every show that you go to, you're going to come back and say, "That was a great show." I usually do the introductions to the shows of the Batavia Players. And when people are ready to leave at night, one of the things that they will always tell me is, "That was a great show." So perhaps some of you would like to come and see what we do. We would love to have you come sometime and see exactly what Batavia Players is doing. Please keep us in mind and have a positive attitude towards us. Thank you.
John Roach, One Sixteen Grand View Terrace here in the city of Batavia. I still have some concerns over the council going to vote for a grant to help out on Harvester Ave. This is private property. The man bought it a couple of years ago, about maybe four or five years ago. When he bought it, he knew the condition of the property. He knew the people or some of those buildings were in disrepair, but he bought it anyways. And now the council's thinking of getting a grant of about $1 million, basically to bail him out, help him tear down five buildings that have already been cited for code violations. And I think there's going to be a city cost. Do we pick up a share of that? I may not be right, but I heard it may be 10%. I don't know. If not, great. But what assurances do we have after taxpayers pay to have private property taken down for a private owner, that the guy will do anything with the property? We all hope he does, but do we have any written assurances? Do we have any assurance that after we take down those five buildings, which will then make the property, you would think, a little more valuable, that he doesn't sell it? What if he flips it? What happens then? A little bit of a concern there. And I still remember the Macy Mall, when the city went to bat for the same property, different owner, spent taxpayer money to tear down the Macy Mall and everything else, and we really didn't get much out of it. One or two businesses went in, from what I understand, one of them left. So there's only one of them still there. I'd like to know if the violations, the code violations, was he fined? And has he paid the fine? And in between now and the time the grant's awarded, and then the bid is awarded, will he continue to be fined? Once again, he's in violation. Other than that, I think the idea of borrowing the $2 million to buy new water meters is a great idea. We don't have any choice. And I fully support the idea council has of hiring another city employee to do the installation work as opposed to contracting it out. Somebody mentioned we could save maybe up to $9 million over the length of this. Everyone's going to look, oh, just another city employee, and it may pop up the taxes. But you never see how much you saved. You know, it doesn't show up in your tax bill. So I hope you go out, vote to do that, and I hope you vote to sell the property and the mall that's on the agenda. Thank you.
Councilor's thoughts? Rachel, did you have any response in reference to the Harvester?
For Harvester, the grant does not have any city finances going into it. It'd be strictly a pass-through grant of $1 million if it was awarded through Empire State Developments Restore New York program. So again, it's a pass-through. It was a project that was eligible, and I look at it in two different ways, the economic development side, then we have the other side, which is the inspections arm of the city. So I certainly can see where you're coming from. There's a lot of redevelopment that can happen on that campus in various different ways. And even if they were to take down those buildings and portions of the campus or all of the campus sold, if it went to the right developer, who was going to do a project and realize the best use and potential for that space, that would be a win for the city. So I certainly can see where you're coming from. So that's the update on the Harvester. And the theater, we've had a very nice discussion last week with three members of the board, and we've asked for an executive summary of their planning for the next few years, and we're just awaiting to get that back right now.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear. I don't think anyone here is against the theater or trying to work against the theater. Some of these letters, it seems that it's trying to pit that the city's against the theater and all that. I think this is strictly a financial situation, and, you know, has to be worked out, and hopefully cooler heads will prevail and come up with a solution. That's all.
I don't think anyone's against the theater. I don't think it's the city council or taxpayers responsible for paying their bills.
I'm certainly in favor of the theater, and I was on the DRI committee when they chose that project, and I think it's a great project. However, we have to maintain the city's coffers and the taxpayers' funds, and that building is owned by the taxpayers, not by the city. So we have to do what's right. So I think we should continue on the negotiations and work out some type of arrangement, and I think we're close to doing that. So I will leave that up to the attorney and the city manager to work this out and report back to us at future time when they have more information.
Mr. President, just my recollection, but isn't it true that when we have, the city has to pay the mall operating fees to the merchants association if they're not paid by someone, whoever owns the property, if they're not paying the mall operating fees? And in this case, the city, is that correct, Rachel? We're paying money, our taxpayers' money.
Our general fund taxpayer money is...
Okay, so it's actually costing us money right now, which we don't appropriate for. We don't do that. Okay, thank you.
Getting back to the, Mr. Roach, you mentioned that we have no cost involved in this grant? And then whatsoever?
Nope, it's being written. The owner of the property has paid a grant writing firm to write the grant. The only cost we'd have is a few hours of time with the resolutions to bring through council. There is a compliance plan, so they have to submit a plan to Empire State Development. They'd have to enter into an undertaking agreement with the city to ensure that they completed the project as was laid out in what they agreed to do with Empire State Development.
Is the grant being granted as fines?
I don't know about code fines. I do know there are code violations to look at particular buildings on the campus, some of which line up with the buildings that they're looking for Restore New York grant money for.
And if we, if he doesn't pay the fines and the buildings come down, do we forgive him the fines when we go?
I don't think they...
It's not at that point, council members. There are pending code violations that are being addressed through that process, but we're not at a point where we have an outcome, as far as I know.
So it's pending, they're pending, they're not, there's no fines involved yet, or maybe there will, maybe there won't be, I don't know. Sometimes they just have you clean the mess up, and they work it out. So it depends on the court system at this point. Anyone else, any other comments? Communications? Just Kings, I believe.
Yep, Just Kings originally had submitted a request for a toy giveaway. This is now being sponsored by Everybody Eats. This is scheduled for this Friday, December 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the city center corridor. And again, it's a toy giveaway.
Any questions to consider ahead? Okay.
That's it.
The next city council meeting will be held Monday, January 13th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. at the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. We have a presentation today. Do you need to advise the thing?
Nope, nope.
Rachel's providing handout. Good evening, everyone. Ed Flynn, the Director of Planning from Lovella Associates. And we have been engaged by the city of Batavia and the Batavia Development Corporation to help advise and assist with the request for proposals for the Brisbane Mansion. So I wanted to give you a little bit of a background of what the RFP is all about, tell you why we're doing the RFP, give you a little bit of a schedule, and then talk about a little bit of the past successes the city has had with doing RFPs and how that has benefited the city and downtown. So I had the handout here, it's basically my cheat sheet, so I'm going to kind of go through it. But the reason we're doing it, the purpose of it, is we want to make sure there's some developer interest in the Brisbane Mansion. We want to provide them information on the property, so we have the great existing conditions report that we got from Insight Architecture that's going to provide a lot of information for the developers that they'll be looking for in terms of the existing condition of the building, the site, as well as what are some opportunities for redevelopment. And we also want to make sure we establish some community goals for the project before it goes out, so a developer knows what the community goals are for the projects. And the ones we kind of have listed here are, you know, preservation of the building in sight. It's an important historic property in the city of Batavia, very visible, a lot of heritage and history to the building, and so that's kind of a key goal that we want to maintain. Compatibility with downtown, tackling downtown and the surrounding, there's a residential neighborhood just around it. Also making sure there's some kind of investment in the building, that people are putting money in the building, and it's going to be a nice building when they're done or redeveloping it. We want to put it back on taxable use. So that building has always been, since 1917, has been non-taxable. Put that property back, make sure that the owner pays taxable reuse, so obviously you don't want a nonprofit to go in there. And then we want to make sure we get an experienced developer with financial resources. So that would be part of the RFP, part of the process of reviewing proposals when they come in, and talking to the banks and whoever they're using for their financial banking. So that's kind of what would be in the RFP and what the purpose of it is, but, you know, why are we doing it? So the property will be vacant once the police vacates it at the end of 2025. And it's obviously a very important property in the city of Batavia. And we want to make sure we ensure appropriate development. And the only way you can really do that is through that RFP process. You don't want to process where somebody's going to take your property, hold the property for five years, nothing happens with it. We want to make sure that you control that through the RFP process. We also want to make sure we have a developer who has the capacity to actually get it done financially. They have done other projects like this, and they're ready to go. We don't want somebody who's going to wait five years to get this project done. And I already talked about getting the properties done tax-free. So that's why we want to do it. And I put a tentative schedule here. This could change based on what happens, but there is a typo on the first bullet there. It should be 2025. But now, in January, we're going to try to finalize the RFP. We're going to probably talk to, taminate some developers to tell them that this is potentially coming out in a month or two, and see if they're interested in it. And then also put together a developer list that we will send to developer, RFP, R2. From February to April, we're hoping to release the RFP in February, have it due in April, give the folks about 90 days to, you know, put together the proposal. And then from May to June, probably have the staff review the proposals. There'll probably be some developer discussions to see, you know, if there needs to be any changes based on their proposals before it comes to council. And then the summer, come to council for the sale of the property. And then after that, execute all the agreements with the developer, and then work with that developer to seek out funding, because there's probably going to need to be funding to make sure this project happens. And then I put a list of some of the past RFPs that we have done in the city and how successful they were. And you can see all of those buildings, there's five buildings there that have been sold in the city. They were either foreclosed properties or properties on city parking lots. And you can see, at the time we sold them, zero value in terms of taxable value to the city. Now they're worth 3.5 million in the city. So they're generating taxes. And you can see the types of properties we have there. The building owners are still there. Some of these are 10 or 20 years old, they're still in the building, they've been investing in the building, they create character downtown, they create a lot of vitality downtown. And so we're trying to do the same thing with the Brisbane Mansion. And this is our first step in doing that. And just wanted to give you a little summary of that, see if there's any questions, anything you want to add to that.
I was just going to say that we've created a plan and working together with the BDC, with Lovella and the city, to try to straighten up any amount of vacant time from when the police department actually moves out of the building and then the building moves into ownership of the developer. So we want to make sure that we have a snappy timeline so that we don't have a vacancy in the building and the city owns.
I think it's important, because the longer it stays vacant, the more likely things start breaking down or happening, pipes freeze, things can happen, so.
Yeah, I mean, this building compared to, say, 1921 Jackson Revell's is, or 20 Center where the Smokehouse is, those were in much worse condition, but they got a good developer, patient, and obviously they contributed a ton of downtown.
The BDC has probably got about three different developers just in the last two months that have reached out to, they're on the waiting list. They want to make sure that they have an idea when this comes out, because they want to...
Yeah, question. Okay, so you put out an RFP, you find a developer, it looks good, you turn it over to the developer. Eight months later, all of a sudden, work stops on the project, project starts stagnating, developer's telling you one excuse after another. What recourse do you have?
We should have a good, solid agreement. In the agreement, there should be some kind of opportunity to take the property back, if there's any mention of the property, but I'll let George figure that out.
Yeah, recapture clauses, and we don't plan on marketing it to Severino.
Yeah, I mean...
Well, I'm just thinking in general...
No, there are recapture clauses for non-performance.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Very good, thank you.
That would be important, that would be very important, so that we wouldn't let it go into some kind of a problem.
Right. And that's one of the reasons we have the RFP, because in the past, we do auctions, and they'd be, the folks would hold the property for five or six years and do nothing with it.
Right, so that's why I want us to be locked in, where we have a timeline, and we have expectations, and if they don't meet them, we have a clawback or some kind of recourse on it.
How confident are you that we're going to get this done?
Well, you know, it is at the best location, in the city of Batavia, probably the best location in the lower region, right? The intersection of Route 5, Route 63. There's 31,000 cars a day that go down Route 5. Very attractive building, it has 72 parking spaces in the back, it has a park in the back, it's right adjacent to downtown, so if I had the money, I'd do it, but I shouldn't pay a lot of money. But I mean, there's a lot of investors out there that will see all of those assets and probably respond to it.
So anything else you'd like to finish up with, or?
No, no.
Any other questions from council? Okay, well, thank you very much for doing your due diligence on it. Hopefully we can get this moving forward. Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Good night, Ed.
Thank you.
The tip application? Cohocton bid awards.
Yep, sorry.
Cohocton bid.
You do have a memo and resolution for awarding the bid for the Cohocton and Walnut Water Line. At this point, we are opening the bids on the 12th, but we wanted to bring this to a conference, so you had time to see what the award would look like, so we can approve it at the business meeting in January on the 13th.
And then all those X's will be filled in?
They will be filled in by...
The names and amounts?
Yep, by the contractor we choose at bidding. So the 12th is this Thursday, I think?
Right.
Yep, so we'll be getting bids in Thursday. And we didn't have our second meeting in December, so we couldn't bring it to that conference. So we wanted to bring it here, so you knew it was coming up, to be prepared for January.
Any questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to next year's business meeting for a vote? I thought it should be complete. Okay, there it gets moved. The tip application?
Yes, so the city has been successful in the past with the Transportation Improvement Program. This is the grant we did receive to work on the Harvester and Richmond Streets, portions of them. There's only certain thoroughfares in the city that qualify, and we would like to submit this year for a tip application that may or might, may not be funded this year, but could be in subsequent years. You have to get into the plan with good applications. So we're looking at Richmond Avenue from Park Road to Route 98. So that would be by the VA, by...
Race Track.
Yep, the side, the horse side of the racetrack, yep. The, can't think of the school, Notre Dame, thank you. Notre Dame, the football stadium, up to the light at 98. We also would like to submit State Street from Richmond Ave to the city line. So that would be going upstate, out by the school to the town city line. And Bank Street Denio to the city line as well. Each of these streets is in need and various repairs, including curbing, sidewalk, street repair, and we're trying to pair with Tom Phelps's help, water and wastewater projects and storm sewer projects at the same time. So we'd like permission to apply for this, and this will move to tonight's business meeting.
This would allow the installation of sidewalks from Park Road past the current horse side of the racetrack, but there aren't enough sidewalks.
It potentially could. I don't know if we've looked at that, and I don't know if we've looked at the right of way, but there are sidewalks that the town just extended through an old agreement we had from the VA to Park Road. Yep.
The VA side is a sidewalk side.
But you're right, we, there is a gap in sidewalks after you get past the VA. So yes, that could be what we look at in the project as well. Yep.
Any other questions?
Would this be a good time, too, to address some of the lead plumbing?
So I don't know if we have, if we do have lead, we would definitely address it while we're down there, for sure. I'm not sure, Tom, if this area, yeah, it might not be the area that we're finding any in. And we're finding it sporadically. We're not finding like 20 city pipes in 20 homes that all have lead in one cluster. It's, it's a lot more difficult to find here in the city.
Any other questions or concerns about the tip application that will go to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting? I think that gets moved. Sale of real property, 17-20 City Center?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So if you're in downstairs at City Hall in the city center building, the first storefront you come to is Genesee Dental. And from Genesee Dental, all the way down to where the Old Gentleman Gyms is, is the parcel 17 through 20. We received an offer for TC Simco Corp. to buy these parcels for $79,000, and I'd like city council to consider that offer tonight. Correct, this one would.
Any questions or concerns about that? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business? Okay, there it gets moved. RLF Grant, 99 Main Street?
Yes, and the last item we have, well, we have an addition, sorry. Second to last item we have is the RLF Grant application for 99 Main Street. 99 Main Street is the former Thomas &amp; Doyer Shoe Store. It was purchased by Mr. and Mrs. Nepali, who are doctors, and have renovated the first floor into oral surgery, second floor into offices, and they're working to finish out the third floor with apartments that are actually, have a mezzanine in them, they're going to be really, really spectacular. They did receive funding from the DRI grant, they're the absolute last building improvement grant Tammy has outstanding, and they do need a little more help for some of their third floor apartment finishes, that they would like $20,000 from the RLF fund. The BDC panel reviewed it, and the board scored it a... The BDC panel reviewed it and the board scored it a just under 98. So it's not our highest score that we've had come through. A 98 out of 100, and that is, of course, they can receive the 20 points for the apartments.
What was the cost, their investing versus the 20,000 or...
Their investing is $604,010.96.
Right.
Yeah, so it's a large investment. It's been a project that's seen quite its share of ups and downs with their contractor unfortunately passing away in the middle of it. So it's been a little bit slower, but they are extremely committed to Batavia and getting the project done, and the BDC board gave it a very good score to move forward. And this would move to business tonight too, if you, if you would allow it.
I have a couple of questions on the earlier, the one before that, the 17 to 20 City Center.
Go ahead.
So, okay. Rachel, is that the, does that include that hallway that we got stuck with once?
No, the city owns all hallways.
Okay, and the other thing, being an RFP, do we have conditions on how soon something has to be done with this property so it just doesn't sit there?
This is a fair market value sale.
We had an appraisal and the bids, they're buying it for fair market value, so it's not an RFP.
Well, I thought that was what we had discussed before, and the Council President, I clearly remember him saying with...
Right, we got extended an offer before I could even work on an RFP.
Okay, and does this corporation, didn't they already buy some property?
They did, they just purchased 11 and 11A.
Right, have they done anything with that?
Um, no, it hasn't closed. We have to get through closing. It takes about a month and a half to, four months to get through closing? I don't know, George.
They have to prepare the title documents, we have to prepare the deed package.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, George.
It's under contract, but it has to go through preparation of deed package, they have to do the title work, so it's probably a month or so.
Maybe we should wait on this one till the other one closes?
Yeah, I think the city manager's office is in due diligence, it's a fair market value offer, so if there's any particular reason that this buyer would have concerns associated with their activities or their ability to close on it, I think that would have been better this far.
They do have tenants eager to move into two of the spaces already.
Thank you.
And they're, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Tom. If you couldn't hear, Tom, there's advertising going on for 11 and 11A now. So they're, they're getting the word out there for tenants in that space as well.
So what you're saying, Rachel, is auctioning it off to the lowest or the highest bidder versus fair market value makes a big difference because they're paying the full price of what it's worth right now, and so they, they're doing their own thing with it.
Right, and it goes on the tax.
It goes right back on the tax.
And I don't think they, this individual wants to sit on it and see it remain empty. I think they want to gain a source of revenue and make sure their taxes and fees are able to be covered and make improvements on the properties.
My only concern, we end up with another mess like we did with the hallway where the guy defaults on the hallway, loads it up with TVs and tires and junk, and it, not only did the city lose money, we had to clean up the whole mess that was left behind.
Yeah, I mean, they're taking on a property that I dare say is in rough condition. They understand what they're getting into, this individual, and they'll need to do some kind of structural roofing improvements and to open it up for tenants, but from everything I've seen, they're dedicated and committed to making investments in city center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back on the RLF grant, so we are in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting. Let me make sure I didn't get off track here. Now, the next one is surplus equipment from the Bureau of Maintenance.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I do not have the memo and resolution coming, so Tom, help me out.
Hi, Evan. We're talking about 2005 Ford F-250 truck with a plow and 2011 F-150 truck with an empty diesel tank.
Yes, that's exactly what we'd like to surplus.
Say it out of fuel, but it just caught someplace locked inside the motor.
Empty diesel tank. Yep, so these will go onto the auction at the same time on the vehicles as well, right? Here's that.
So one is 12 years old and one is like almost 20 years old.
Yes.
So we think we've got our life out of these vehicles, and so I'd like to hear it. We have to use them until we absolutely can't get anything more out of it. Efficient, I guess.
And they're hoping to auction quickly so they're going out during snow season so we get a higher monthly payment. Otherwise, if we wait, it'll be after snow season.
People that want to buy a plow in the middle of July. All right, we're good.
What's the empty diesel tank, Tom?
It's just a storage tank. They use the diesel tank to fill up the dump trucks and snowplows.
Okay, how big of a tank is it?
What?
How big of a tank is it?
That I can't answer you. I'm not sure.
Is that in the back of the truck?
Yeah, it's mounted in the back of the truck.
Three or five.
It's put in a monster.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know what it, yeah, that, that should be of value to someone too.
Well, I trust your judgment and you've done us well in the past, so. Any questions or concerns on that? Are we in consensus to move this to tonight's, is this a tonight's business meeting one, Rachel?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I didn't see the asterisk on it.
Thank you.
Okay, so that goes to tonight's business meeting. Can I get a motion through adjournment? Mr. Beely, seconded by Mr. Richmond. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Okay, the meeting is adjourned. I now call to order the regular business meeting. You've all received the copy of the October 2024 financials. Is there any concerns or questions or additions or omissions you'd like to have corrected or answered? Okay, so are we in consensus to accept the October 2024 financials?
Yep.
You've also been given a copy of the November 2024 minutes. Any questions or concerns on those? Okay, are we in consensus to approve the November 2024 minute? Okay. We have several agenda items today. Let's start out assigning them now. 138 2024, the Round 9 Restore New York Municipal Grant Program for the Harvester Campus. Mr. McGinnis. 139 2024, the Restore New York Grant for the Cars Reborn Project. Mr. Twitchell. 140 2024, the 105 Batavia LLC Restore New York Grant for the Cars Reborn. Mr. Richmond. 141 2024, the, um, these are the water meter readers. Mr. McGinnis. Number 4, 142 2024, the council meeting schedule. Mr. Bayakowski. 143 2024, Lovella to proceed with the Swan Street sidewalk design and the scope of services. Mr. Schmidt. 144 2024, the building maintenance worker position. Mr. Beely. 145 2024, the various committees and boards appointment. Mr. Bayakowski. 146 2024, the application for the firefighter's grant. Mr. Twitchell. 147 2024, the New York State Transportation Improvement Fifth Grant that we talked about earlier. Mr. Schmidt. 148 2024, the authorization to sign the agreements for the sale of 17 and 20 City Center. Mr. McGinnis. And 149 2024, the revolving loan grant award authorizing executive participation agreement. Mr. Richmond. And I believe the last one is the equipment surplus grant.
Yes.
Mr. Beely. There would be 150.
150, yep.
24. City Attorney, do you have anything you'd like to report today?
Yes, Council President, members of council. We remain busy across the board. We are working on a variety of contract matters, real estate matters, general municipal questions that come up from the city managers in office and departments. We've also worked on a variety of code enforcement cases in recent times. There's just one matter, attorney-client matter for discussion later. And that, that's, that's about what we've covered recently.
Okay, any questions for the city attorney? Can the city managers report?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Tonight, I'd like to welcome Gabby Colwell to the city and our executive team. She's our new HR director, and we're so excited to have you join our team, Gabby. Thank you. Police station construction is on time and on budget. Moving forward, the Bid Christmas in the City was a great success for anyone that joined it. Thanks to the bid for putting that together and all the help from city staff and those who are in the parade. The mall entrances are open and usable, so please go through and check them out when you get a chance. And almost all of the DRI projects are completed, and we're looking to gather projects in a new DRI area, DRI 2.0, over the winter time. So we'll have more information coming out to the public and to council, probably launch the effort with a press conference and see if we can't use another area of the city, specifically around Swan, Harvester, up 63, kind of the Creek Park area for a DRI application this summer. And that's it for now. If there's any questions?
I just had one thing I'd like to remind you about. My neighbor who lives down the street from me contacted me today and mentioned that she's having a hard time hearing our meetings because our audio system is messed up. So I just wanted to remind you, I know we've talked about it before and you were looking into it, just want to remind you that we do have people that are concerned and they're unable to be able to hear the meetings properly and so on. So if we could maybe look into that and figure out something so that the public can follow...
Yeah, I think Krista and I are going to check the county uses, their audio system because we were there that night and it seemed to work really great, so...
Yeah, they have, there's our cord connected, they're portable and they're push button. So I think it'd be better than this, you know, sound activated system. It doesn't work very well. So we have had people that are, you know, disabled, have hearing issues, and they, they definitely want to follow our process, so I think we should do our best to accommodate them if we could.
Yep. Oh, and we're all working on budget diligently for the next three to four weeks till we deliver it to you.
Great, thank you. Any other quick questions, state in from council? Okay, thank you. Unfinished business? I don't think we have any, so.
Gentlemen, I just want to let Rachel know that our department has worked a great job. The gentleman did pick up leaves and plowed out of this last snow.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Great, great job.
Good job, DPW.
Thanks. Yeah, it was fabulous.
They really are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 138 2024, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to authorize the application for Round 9, Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program for the Harvester Complex.
Seconded by Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns?
Yes.
Yes.
I had, I had some concerns that the taxpayers are going to be stuck for a portion of this grant. Well, that wasn't the case. So if we're going to get this thing torn down, regardless if the current owner sells it or he keeps it and makes improvements in the property, the building there now, because we have really no other options other than, you know, tear it down and bill it, put it on his taxes. So I think this is a very reasonable resolution, and I just wanted to, I had a whole list of concerns and city manager addressed it. Now we know where we stand, 100%, I think it's a win-win. The building goes down and it costs the taxpayer enough.
Well, it is a grant, it's coming from a different coffer, but it's not costing the local taxpayer anything.
Oh, that's...
However, the Restore New York has funds for this type of thing. When you have a large building that's unrecoverable, it's not going to be worth anything to leave it standing other than being a hazard for curiosity seekers or kids in the area or whatever. I think it's a, that's why they have these grants out there. So if this project qualifies for that grant, meets all the state's requirements, I'm all for it. I think that it helps our community, it improves the property, and if the property gets improved, that benefits the local community, so I think it's a great idea. It's private business and it's up to them to decide how they want to manage their own buildings, and there's grants for a lot of things. And if they have this grant and they got the grant writer and did it themselves and got it all figured out, I think we should support them in whatever they want to do.
Yeah, I agree with you, having once worked in that building, but sometimes, and I'm sure Mr. Beely can attest to this, a building reaches the end of its useful life and it's beyond restoration. I know a lot of people are saying, oh, boy, that, that was Dolar Jarvis, it was the biggest factory and all that. Well, now it's a lot of water-soaked concrete, and we've seen other buildings. Look at the Wired Plow Building, that literally fell apart. You can't, you can't generate enough revenue to keep the buildings up, that's part of the problem. And when the roofs start going and they start leaking and that Nancy Harris building, the Harvester Complex, with buildings there, but they were in horrible shape 40 years ago. So, you know, unfortunately, when concrete gets wet and it freezes and starts cracking, the concrete popping, it's, we see every time we drive under and overpass a bridge, the concrete's drawn and has to be replaced, and there's no replacement value here, so... Yeah, it's a, it's a grant and it's private sector and we have to move forward with it. Thank you.
Right. I mean, it's their business, it's their ability, they want to do what they want with it, and if they want to apply for a grant, I think we should support all local businesses trying to improve their properties. It's their decision to do what they want to do. It's their, it's a free country, it's their property, so...
And of course, the worst thing that could happen is, okay, we don't want to cooperate and help them, they walk away from it. Then it could become our problem and a real problem.
Yeah, you never know.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution 139 2024, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to execute an Empire State Development Restore New York Grant for the Cars Reborn Project and amend the 2024-2025 budget.
Seconded by Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution 140 2024, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution approving the execution of an undertaking agreement between the city of Batavia and 105 of Batavia LLC for a Restore New York Grant to benefit the Cars Reborn Project.
Seconded by Mr. Bayakowski. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 141 2024, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution authorizing the general obligation bonds or bond anticipation notes for the city of Batavia, Genesee County, New York State, to finance the acquisition
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution one forty-three twenty twenty-four, Mr. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution scheduling regular council meetings through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second in line, Mr. Schmidt? Questions or concerns? Did we make any mistakes on the dates? I checked it three or four times. Sometimes we...
We threw one in there, just, no, I'm just kidding.
I was going to say, if you did it after, I'd read it five hundred times. Because one year, we did read it several times, and we did have a conflict in there. I don't know how that happened. All right, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution one forty-three twenty twenty-four, Mr. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to authorize the ballot to proceed with the Swan Street sidewalk design and accept the scope of services.
Second in line, Mr. McGinnis? Any other project for the south side? Any questions or concerns on this? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution one forty-five twenty twenty-four, Mr. Baikowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to appoint members to various city committees and boards.
Second in line, Mr. Twitchell? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution one forty-six twenty twenty-four, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to submit an application for assistance to firefighter's grant.
Second in line, Mr. Schmidt? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution one forty-seven twenty twenty-four, Mr. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to submit an application for New York State Transportation Improvement Program funding for three infrastructure improvement projects.